Yeah, he's had eight days of lockdown. And he had a survey in September the 2nd. He had a blood show.
She was hired to do that. I'm with that.
I said, Johnny, is he here?
We do.
Of course, my girl.
I find this. You're fired. It's hitting me now.
Yeah, should already have.
He has a bad vision.
It's five thirty, so we will call the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission to order, which is standing with you, please, and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Rhyme Bryant.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Keith Fuggles.
Here.
Pam McNew.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams.
Here.
Do I hear a movement to accept the minutes from the October fourteen meeting?
So moving.
Moving a second on the favor, say aye. Oppose nay. Planned agenda items. A, road closure for end of Deep Cove Lane, applicant property owner Michael Goldsboro, text map zero thirty-six F, group A, parcel zero zero nine point zero zero through zero one two point zero zero. Located in Deep Cove Lane, A one agriculture forestry district, F one flood plain district three. Mr. Goldsboro.
I'm Richard Lemaitre, representing Mr. Goldsboro. Be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Is everything in order?
It is just a closure of an unapproved driveway. They're gonna be doing some lot combinations with it once this has been removed.
Will there be any kind of turnaround at the end of the road?
Um, there's not, but I believe it's just a gravel driveway currently out there with nothing as it stands.
Not gonna be improved as far as we know?
Uh, nothing, no improvements whatsoever at this time.
And we're not landlocking anything?
Uh, no, sir. Scroll down if you don't care, feel that one parcel. I mean, there's no one, uh, scroll down a bit. There's no one that uses that area. It's just forested area at this time. Uh, all the other, uh, properties you can see either have frontage where they come in off of that easement that is in there to their lots.
So it won't landlock them as long as we combine them?
Once he submits a survey and reconfigures it, they will all have the access off the county road or the end of this, this closure one, yes.
So my questions. I'm making a motion to approve.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose nay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
B, subdivision plan for three lots to two lots, applicant Wade Loving, property owner Jane Will Cox, text map zero eighty, parcel zero one eight point zero three through zero one eight point zero five, located sixty-four oh six highway eleven south. C one rural center district, district three. Mr. Loving.
Yes.
Aye, assume. Tell us what you got.
So, uh, we're reconfiguring a few property lines. Uh, the, the properties are gonna stay same owners. They're just moving a few property lines around to reconfigure these, these properties.
Everything good to go?
We'll review the plan if it's in order.
Everything good to go?
We'll review the plan if it's in order.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose nay.
Thank you.
C, rezoned requests from A one to A three for three or four one acre lots. Applicant property owner Rosendo Bedola, text map zero thirty-nine, parcel one three four point zero zero, located at thirty-eight seventy-five Prospect Church Road, A one agriculture forestry district, district one. Mr. Bedolo in here?
Representative in here.
We just tabled last month, so y'all will need to take action.
Deny. I'm making a motion for deny.
Got a motion to deny and a second, all in favor, say aye. Okay. We're skipping D, that's a no-show, down to E, rezoned requests from R one to C two. Applicant Chris Beckstrand, property owner Robert Schilling, text map zero sixty-eight, parcel zero twenty-four point zero zero and zero twenty-four point zero eight, located Chautuga Drive, R one suburban residential district, district seven. Mr. Beckstrand.
Good evening. I am here, uh, on, uh, the tabled event from last month, so I've provided you all with the requested documentation that I can provide, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Opposition?
I don't know if I have the floor to speak or not.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I live at three one four Yona Lane, right around behind this property that he's talking about. Uh, I sit on my porch regularly after I've cut the grass and traffic goes up and down Chautuga Drive like it's a speedway. Uh, a good nine out of every ten cars do not stop at that traffic light. That traffic sign, excuse me. If he's proposing to put eighty units in there, that's gonna simply increase the number of cars going up and down that road. We also have some strong considerations about what's gonna happen with the lighting that his project's gonna project. We have beautiful vision behind our home. When we bought that house, we were told that was residential space. We were never told it was zoned commercial. And now suddenly here we are with potential strong lighting coming through to our backyard. Another question I have is what about water pressure? We already have a real problem with water pressure where we live, on our street and all the streets around us. If he's talking about putting a facility back there with multiple, multiple units, it's gonna really draw down on our water pressure. It's gonna also have a serious impact on our sewer system as well. And there's no, there's no second way out of there. If you drive down Chautuga, it ends at, at, at the facility back there where there's been new housing in front of the existing facility, and there's no other way out of there other than back through Chautuga Drive, which is a real concern. Because I've seen people walk their dogs. I myself have walked up and down that street. I myself have almost been run over on that street. It's a very serious concern, not only for myself, but other people who live in that area as well. Uh, also, what is this going to do for our property values? Again, as I said before, when we moved there, it was zoned residential back there. Now it's gonna be commercial. I'm gonna have commercial property sixty feet behind my property line. I don't know if Mary has anything to add to that. She's my neighbor, my next door neighbor.
I echo Mike Thomas's comments as well and am concerned. I don't know if I could ask another question. I know, I read the minutes that, uh, that from the October meeting. I was not present, but, uh, subtly, some member or someone had asked, oh gee, you need to have, need to have consideration for the neighbors and things like that. I don't, would like to know what, maybe you've done some work in this area. I'd like to know what other concerns there are. And, um, also the, um, uh, the need for, uh, the safety is a big one, the water pressure. I have similar concerns to, to Mike, but also the, um, the, uh, oh gosh. Well, the view, yes, the view, we have a nice dense range of, uh, of homes, I mean, dense range of foliage, but for a good four months of the year, they're bare. You know, we're gonna be looking at a parking lot, the building lights, obviously, you know, would be consideration. So to go from residential to commercial is obviously, you know, a big thing. Um, there is someone that, that asked, or I think you had said about a question I have for you, Mark, right? Oh, Chris, sorry, Chris. I apologize. Is, uh, it was mentioned in the minutes that, um, you or someone from your company had spoken with the POA. When someone had brought up the comment of, hey, have you checked with the neighbors? And what about water and what about sewer? So could you share, could you share with us who you spoke with and what was the outcome of that conversation with the POA?
Yeah, this recording documentation that I just presented, I have met with Beth, who's over development at the POA. And together with Beth, I, we also met with the fire chief and his assistant. We talked safety. We talked about the water and sewer. Uh, I have a letter from them, signed by the president of the POA, I think his name's Matthew, uh, that this is a project that they feel comfortable that they can, uh, that they can support. It may require some upgrades that we would participate in paying for. So that's in the letter. Uh, the fire chief, we went over what the, the type of layout would be. There would be, uh, a road around the community so that, you know, if there was an emergency, they have, there, there may be hospitals aside, there may be no other construction project that, that exists that has to be safer than an assisted living with vulnerable senior adults. And we have regulations on, on, uh, you know, providing safe exit and regress for them as well. So as far as the community, now, we want a buffer too. So, you know, there's an eleven acre piece of property. Um, the owner wants to sell it. If you build an eighty unit assisted living, uh, I don't know how many homes you could put in that same area, but there's gonna be far fewer drivers at an assisted living than there would be if it became another big lot of homes. Because at my current community in Cleveland, we have three residents that drive. So probably we'll have, in the morning hours, we have a team that come in, you know, and if there was traffic, I, I mean, I, I even have the ability to change the staffing times. So six thirty's better or seven o'clock is better for the neighborhood. Uh, we wanna be a good neighbor. Uh, I didn't wanna bring a big group, but here among you is a fellow Tellico Village resident whose brother also lives in our community. He can speak to who we are. Um, if you also choose to wanna hear from him, he's willing to speak, Chris Bond. Um, and also, uh, I've been, yeah, uh, we've, um, Brandy, um, is an industry professional as well, and they can speak to the need, she can speak to the need in the area. Um, you know, whether a project like this is done now, before, before there's a huge need, you know, it's a matter of being reactive or proactive. And Tellico Village needs senior living for seniors. People will want a choice. So I can totally sympathize with, with the concerns, and I would do everything I could to, you know, lighting is an issue. I would wanna be a good neighbor to you. This isn't a big corporation. It's me. I would be your neighbor, running the community and offering critical care to residents of your community who need this.
It's, it's Chris.
Yes.
Do you have any drawings? Do you have any elevations? Do you have any plot plans? Do you have anything that we might be able to review that will give us an idea of exactly what are you talking about? What are you planning on doing? Because I look back at that space, I say, okay, fine, but you can move that space. You can do as many things as you want with that space. I have no idea what you're doing. My background is in architecture. I have no problem reading whatever information you can provide.
Yeah, I'd share that with you. So, uh, we, what we presented to the council was a replica of what we built in Cleveland. It does not have to be, so I have those plans. I'd let you take a look at them.
I'd like to see drawings and elevations done for that specific space.
Right, so.
What are you planning on doing? Where is this gonna go? Where is that gonna go? Where are the roads gonna go?
The challenge, as you can imagine, is that we're in the middle of a zoning commission planning meeting, and I have not engaged an architect. I'm not gonna pay for two hundred thousand dollars set plans until I know that this is a, a project that the community supports. The POA supports it, the fire department supports it.
Chris, could I say? I was just gonna say, as Chris mentioned, I have a brother that lives in the facility down in Cleveland, Tennessee, early onset dementia, and he's been there three years. And I can just say Chris is a man of character, uh, spiritual. Um, I, I think he would not pull the wool over everybody's eyes. I believe in what he says. He would communicate any, anything he can, including for you all, what, what some of the showstoppers or your minds would be and work with you. That's all I can add.
Well, I would like to see from my own perspective, I'd like to, to have a lot more information as to exactly what you plan on doing with that space, one. And two, what can you do if you can do anything about the traffic situation? And, and what about water and sewer? That to me is a big concern because we already have water pressure issues. We talk to people in the village that there's water pressure issues in the village. There's sewer issues. And I, all I can see is that this will make matters worse unless something could be done to, to eliminate it.
Yeah, um, you know, as far as community infrastructure, oftentimes, uh, we end up having to be reactive than proactive. I hope that with this coming on, onboard, you know, this will, this isn't gonna be built tomorrow. Um, it'll take at least four or five months to, to draw the plans. Takes at least a year to build. It's my understanding that the POA is already, they're already considering, um, growth in the area. I mean, numbers that I've heard, Tellico Village is, is a magnet. People coming from out of state, and it, it'll just continue to increase. So they will have to address it because the growth is coming no matter, you know, I mean, not no matter what.
I don't know where else you're gonna, every lot around me is already built on, but, um, I'm concerned about property values as well. What is this facility that you're looking to build? How is that gonna affect my property values? How is it gonna affect Mary's property values and other people that live in this property you're talking about?
Yeah. This is the second, this is the second community I've developed, so I can't say, you know, what a historical situation has been. But I do know that in, in the communities that have, uh, this isn't going to be a dive. You know, this is going to look very nice, and we're gonna take really good care of it. Um, it's already in a pocket of Tellico Village that supports senior living. There's the premier and there's the neighborhood. Um, we did not originally want to build it there, to be honest. We looked all over Tellico Village for a piece of property that would be big enough and that would be suitable for a community. We, we can't build this thing on a hill. You know, we want flat ground. This needs to be safe for the, the residents who are gonna reside there. So, um, it was by far the best piece of property we found after two years of working with our Realtor. He's in the room here as well. This wasn't my day, let's just. So in regard to your question about the road, uh, that is not a promise that I could ever make. That's not something I have full control over, but.
These folks, I imagine, would have a lot more.
We could combine together, while the property is not owned by the POA. It's, I have done a little research on that. It's owned, there's the little neighborhood that came in. The buffer is actually owned by that neighborhood. And if everybody wants that, I'm just gonna say the impact of traffic from senior living is very, very minimal.
Well, I sit on my porch, as I said before, and I'm telling you, there's a lot of vehicles that go up and down that road. Now, at eight o'clock at night, it's very few. But during the day, I sit there and I, and I'm telling you, I've seen people going fifty, sixty miles an hour down that road, and they blow through that stop sign.
Well, it may be that there's other safety, you know, measures that can be taken in the neighborhood, speed bumps.
Speed bumps would be, would be, would be.
So that's, I feel like that's outside of my specialty and, but, but the other thing I will say regarding, um, property values, I have never seen the property values, I cannot, I can't speak with certain views with that either, but with a Realtor here in town, there's already two senior living communities right there. It's not like it's going to be this new phenomenon, it's like all of a sudden there's senior living. It's already there.
It's a resurfacing, it's a memory care.
It's assisted living and memory care is what we're proposing.
It's gonna come from the residential or that, that this gentleman's seeing. I would think that they're all. Yeah, that's where all the cars are coming from.
Anybody else got anything to add or to subtract? Yes, ma'am?
I, my husband and I are a ten acre across the street from the property, and I echo this gentleman's sentiment about property value. But more importantly, when we bought it, you know, our house literally overlooked, because we sit up on a hill, we overlook this eleven acre property. And for eight years, we loved it, and we also were told it was residential. Um, so to have it now try to be zoned commercial, but, you know, it's definitely a concern for us, especially for property value. And I hate, you know, no offense to you, I, my husband went here last month, and, you know, and I feel like I'm on both sides of the fence, because I have, my mother lives in Florida and is in late stage dementia. So I feel for the people, and I know that's something that is needed, but like you said, you know, you look for properties, and I know it might not be easy, but, I mean, that's why we all have a voice to hopefully, you know, I mean, disrespect, but, I mean, the view I have is beautiful, and I have mountain views, and if you were gonna be a single level, am I correct that it's a multi-level structure?
The, the community that we built in Cleveland has one wing that's one level, and it has another wing that is two stories. Um, I'm open-minded. Now, I can't, I can't promise, but the, the property, you know, the, the idea that the land is just gonna sit vacant forever for your view.
Right, no, I agree with that, I mean, you know, I mean, yeah.
The other, the other thing to consider, it feels commercial, but that is someone's home. That is residential living.
I, I agree.
It just doesn't look like your home. It's someone who needs help.
No.
And they're, they deserve to live in a beautiful place too.
I, and that, and that, that's exactly why I was honest to say, you know, my mom just moved her into a home. Um, but at the same time, it just isn't something where, you know, they mentioned, you know, a buffer of trees. I don't get that option because my house sits much higher than that property. So there's nothing I could plant that would, and so they were bringing up lighting and, you know, and I just said I, I've never done this before, so, but I figure, you know, I have a voice to reason, and, and, I mean, there's respect to you, but it's definitely not something you unfortunately are thinking about.
You're doing great for your first time. Do a good job. Just one, two seconds. The land is owned currently by an investor who bought the land. And it'll either be something nice, or it'll be another neighborhood that's nice too. Eventually, it was on the market, uh, a year and a half ago.
Yeah, it's a man who lives in Tonure.
Yeah, he lives in the village in, in.
Yeah, in Tahiti.
And so all I'm getting at is, and then I don't have a dog necessarily, I guess I do kind of, but the thing about it is, I've worked with Chris for almost two years. I know, I can speak to his character as well. Um, but again, it's not gonna stay what it is now, so you kind of have a choice of a neighborhood or something nice. I don't, that's all I wanted to say. Well, a one story would be more acceptable to me. I would also like to see some type of foliage and, and perhaps at the end of that property, maybe some very tall pine trees to, to help the view.
Yeah, the lights.
And I honestly, I'm sure you have the best of motives, and I'm sure you're, you're a great guy and everything else, but I believe in my hero, Ronald Reagan, who said, trust but verify. I have not seen one thing that I can.
This is zoned and here.
Yeah, it's just zoned, and if it were to pass, he would have to come back and get a site plan, and there'd be a site plan review to address all those issues like lighting, and for example, and any buffer.
The C two zone is also contingent on only this project. Um, so it's not that I could buy this, it's zone C two, and then all of a sudden we got a gas station on the corner. So that, that, that's made clear in the, the zoning.
Anybody else?
Can we talk about the people that we will be serving and how we're gonna be meeting their needs? And why people are drawn to Tellico Village? And what it feels like to be a part of that family? And why they're so fearful to who got into Tellico Village? This is where they go to church. This is where their neighbors are that love them. And when we can't meet their needs at what is currently in the village, we're sending them out of their community. We're sending them away from their friends. We're sending them away from their church. So I am compassionate. I live on Slowly Way, it's my backyard, I walk my dog through this. But if it's not for someone, and you have the opportunity to talk to him, I've been serving in senior living for thirty years. He is well-respected. His residents and employees respect him and they trust him. The family members there, their loved ones are being very well taken care of. So if it's not him now, right, he's standing here before you, he's willing to answer questions. My background is in taking care of, doing end of life, um, and dementia, right? So when I meet an eighty-five year old gentleman who gave up driving, who had an eighty-three year old wife who was perfectly fine yesterday, Brady, she was perfectly fine. And he's afraid to drive at night. He's been told he's not supposed to drive. He's gonna get to his wife. And now we're sending him down four forty-four in the dark. The holidays are coming. We have the opportunity in the future to keep more families together in a village that they gave love. So, like I said, I appreciate that you've looked for property. It's in my backyard. These are the people that I love, so you can bring them all. I hope to serve there. I hope to volunteer there. I hope to make their life more meaningful while they're there. Um, but I just, I know that when we're talking about water and electricity, but I just don't want to take the people out of the equation that we're going to be serving. And they deserve to be in a place and in a community with a reputation like what Chris is running in Cleveland. They deserve the best of the best. And that's what Tellico Village has offered them for their time here.
Thank you.
But no, that is not Tellico, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have you got anything new to add?
Well, oh.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just curious if not a two hundred thousand dollar set of plans, but for this man, maybe a landscape architect that can show a master plan for what you're after, if it's a hundred fifty thousand square foot building.
He can look at the plans that I currently have. Yeah, I, I'd open those up to you and send you a set.
Yeah, because if you had a big parking lot up against his set back.
I also, where I wanna be a good neighbor, I'm also, you know, I'm gonna be the decision maker ultimately. I appreciate you, architect. Um, no, I was just. Yes, I'm willing to meet with anyone, one-on-one, come down to the community, come to my home.
We got a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second this.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose nay. Motion is passed.
Thank you.
F, resolution to amend Article Five, Section five point four five D, cluster development option. Jim?
Messrs, this is a resolution we created based off our workshop meetings, dealing with cluster option development. This resolution, we're gonna move that option out of our zoning, so, uh, uh, there'll be no more cluster option developments out there, basically in the R two, if you have single-family lots, but they'd meet the minimum standards of the R one, and you'd have the most family type development.
Need a motion? Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve and a second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose nay. Four, county commission action on planning commission recommendations.
Uh, they followed along with Thaugear's recommendations.
Coach Department.
I don't have anything at this time to add.
Additional comments from the public? Got updates from the planning department?
Uh, nothing, uh, at this point.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So many.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved.
Got a motion to approve and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Four, county commission action on zoning commission recommendations.
Oh, they followed along with Thaugear's recommendations.
Coach Department?
I don't have anything at this time to add.
Additional comments from the public? You got data from the planning department?
Uh, nothing at this point.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Somebody.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
You waiting on board the zoning? You got, busy out? I'm sorry? Your fiction's starting right now, this minute, when they get out.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Need to call the Loudoun County Board of Zoning Appeals to Order. This role call.
Brian, Brian?
Here.
Jim Brooks?
Here.
John Navyer?
Here.
Leon Shields? Mike Walker?
Here.
If you're gonna speak on any subject on this meeting, stand, raise your right hand, repeat after me. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may give in the cause is now pending before this commission be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God. Everybody ready to move?
Our motion to approve. I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planned agenda items. Verge request for seven-foot side yard setback. Advocate property owner Annette Kek. Tax map 009E, group C, parcel 002.00, located 250 Parkway Drive, R1 Suburban Residential District, District 5. Come up here, take your name and tell us what you got. If you're to party yourself with you.
Thank you. As I presented and, and put it in the packet, I'm, I have a 15-foot easement from the property line. And I'm asking for a seven-foot variance so that I can build a 42-foot three-car garage with a service door. And it would put, it would leave eight feet remaining to the property line and 33 feet total from the edge of the neighbor's house to the side of the garage. I intended on having a letter, I drew it up, but Mike, Michael Gilman, the owner of the other neighbor, the house next to me, he's ill. So, he wasn't able to sign the paper. But he said it should be fine. And you guys wanted to talk to him and you could call him. But he wanted to have the, his lawyer review the document that I drew up. But it's just seven feet. So, there'll still be eight feet left between the structure and the property line.
Now, say that again. You said that you talked to your neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
And he said it was okay.
Yes, sir.
But he wanted to let his lawyer read what you wrote up.
He just wanted to verify before he signed anything.
Has he done that?
No, he has not.
When I thought you said...
I, all I have is text messages because he's ill. He's, and it's all in the texts. But he said it should be good. That's his exact words.
Sir, drainage and utilities belong there property line?
So, there is not currently, it's a, like, it puddles up in between our property, the way...
I'm, I'm asking Jim...
I'm not sure if this subdivision has a drainage utilities belong there.
If it does, then you can't, we can't do this.
You wouldn't wanna approach upon that anyhow.
Yeah.
This'd be an opportunity, you know, it's a 42-foot wide structure. You can still have a pretty sizable garage and make the setbacks.
Yeah.
It would be, it would have to be reduced by a car length, a car width.
You could take out the bathroom and whatever that other room is. I don't know what you'd need a bathroom in a three-car garage for.
Because when we come in from the backyard or working on the, on the house, there's not a, a bathroom, right? At that end of the house. So, when we come in, rather than tracking mud and stuff, I wanted a ability to wash our elves and wash our animals because the dogs, I don't...
What was crazy, why you, I mean, in the backyard, I mean, how could it, I mean, and then you would need, you know, either no easement or, or no variance or less than variance? That's what I was curious about. I mean, what's preventing you from building in the backyard?
So, the way that the structure is put, and the, right now, it's all cleared out. Like, right at the property line, all those trees are cleared. And I'm having it built up. What I had intended, because of the way that the water slopes, what I had, what I had proposed on the papers is to run drain lines and run a drain line along both of our property, our property line in between the two houses. And his floods, and he has water issues and I have moisture issues under ours. So, I was gonna connect our gutters and run it to the back property line.
But, I mean, what's preventing you from building in the back?
Because of the way that the, the way that the access is, on the backside of the house, I have two sliding glass doors. So, access from the road...
There's no septic or, or anything like that?
No, there is no septic. There, we have city water and city sewage. There's no, I had one 800 dig come out and marked. And there is no lines underneath that section or anything. And I did have a dig marked at one point for Michael Gilman. So, that if we, I proposed to him that with doing this, I would help him out and connect his three gutters to the line to get the water away from his. Cause his water actually comes into my yard. And then it goes into underneath my, that former driveway, the concrete. So, if I can get it away from both of our yards, and then I could still have the garage.
What kinda animals were you talking about? You said you'd bring the animals in.
Dogs.
Just dogs?
Just dogs. Yeah, I don't want any, I don't have any, like, livestock or anything. It's just, I have three owner, three person, Belgian shepherd mix. And in the back of the house where, so all that concrete has been since removed. And right now, it's just a scum, a crush and run and clay and that red, red dirt. And what we would like to do is fence in the property line and then have it, the backyard, as much as possible for entertainment, for our animals, to contain the dogs so that they don't go anywhere outside of our property.
Jim, did you see a hardship?
Yeah.
No, sorry. I'll make a motion to deny.
Say.
Got a motion in this sec. Anybody else got anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Cut it down.
I'm sorry, what?
You, we deny that you can't do it.
Okay. Where do I go from here or how do I?
I'll go to Jim. Cut it down. You're gonna have to make it smaller.
Make it smaller and you can do something. Meet variance, I mean, meet the, meet the setback.
You can still do the addition, you just need to meet the setback requirements.
And is that, what was the reasoning? I'm not understanding why it was denied, I guess.
I didn't see that...
What was the, there wasn't a hardship, there wasn't...
It's, it's a three-car garage.
I understand that, but you got an eight-foot bathroom. I cut your bathroom off and you'd be good.
But you can't, if I did that, then I wouldn't have the service door ass, access.
We voted and you're denied. Item B. Verge request for eight-foot side yard setback. Advocate property owner Miles Mensur. Tax map 017N, group A. Parcel 003.00, located 2109 Lake Point Drive, A2 Rule Residential District, District 6. Where you go?
Okey-dokey. So, we, it's kind of a weird definition of hardship, I guess. The, the typical setback, we booed, to be honest with you. I, I made an assumption that I had a typical setback of, like in Knox County, it's 20 feet total. And you can do eight and 12 or 10 and 10 and all those combinations. And so, we came up with this floor plan that, yes, you, yes, the answer is, yes, you could change the floor plan and I wouldn't even have to ask for it. The, the, this doesn't mean anything to anybody except the owner, which would be, if I, if I, if I push this kitchen into the, towards the middle of the house, I'd be good, good on the setback. But if I do that, I've, I've kind of train wrecked the floor plan to the tune of...
You're the owner?
I'm representing owner, I'm Bill Andrews, I'm the architect, I'm the jobs. So, this is Miles Mensur's house, I'm just doing it. So, it was a very, very well-laid out floor plan. If we, if we change the floor plan, he'll probably say scrap the project because it's just gonna mess up his light views. And that's okay. I mean, that ain't, I mean, that ain't fun, but that's okay. I guess the only thing that I was kind of wanting to ask, you know, most setback laws are made with good reasons. Duh, I mean, you know. And so, I'm looking at Knox County, 12th, we, we wouldn't even be here if it was in Knox County.
We ain't Knox County.
But, and then Blount County's a 10-foot...
We ain't Blount County or Loudoun County.
I do hear you. I, I understand. But I guess I'm looking at, is there, is it okay to get a variance up or down, I guess? But, I mean, I guess I can or I can't. But I, I didn't think I was asking for a lot of, a lot of...
Needs to be some kinda hardship. To me, the easier thing to do is, has he's had this survey? I mean, he knows this is exactly this much.
I'm sorry?
He knows this is exactly, what is it, seven, eight foot?
It is within inches of that. We think we're 13 feet away from the property line, but we put 12 just to be sure.
We think. Why can't he just move the property line between him and his son and then he's got the, he's got the, he's got the setback?
Man, I'm, I'm all over that idea. I don't think he, I don't know why, did the fly beats me.
Yeah. I, I don't see the hardship, so I'll, I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Got a motion?
No, I'll second this.
Got a motion in a second? Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise.
I would, I would at least say, I know that you can say, well, this ain't that county or that county or that county. But I don't understand how one county can have a 20-foot setback in all the other counties that we've looked at that surround our county.
Why can you sell beer three foot from a church in Lenoir City, but it's 200 or a thou, 2,000 foot in Loudoun County? Ain't that crazy?
There are two different questions.
They're all the same question. Anybody else got anything? There's a motion, where you going?
Motion, John.
Say.
All in favor, say aye. Where you going?